Okay, good morning. It's Monday, August the 10th, 2015, and I'm Hall Potter County Commissioners Court. Today we have Reggie Fowler who will give the indication. So if he comes forward, y'all will please stay at the table and after that we may start with the questions.
Let's pray. God and heaven, we thank you for this day, for another day to just celebrate you. Bless this court. I thank you for justice. I ask that today that we work swiftly, efficiently, but yet thorough. Thank you for the freedoms that we have, and we truly live in a blessed United States of America. Bless this court today in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
(Inaudible) the couple of minutes from July 27, 2015, Hall County Commission for Leading, and August 4, 2015, Special Hall County Commission for Leading.
Excellent.
Kelly, move on. Have the motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Val Zuma, thank you. Number two, the vouchers. Consider an act upon approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county office in the period of July 22, 2015, through August 5, 2015. Check number 163655 through 163919, and wire transfer number 583 through 589, amount of $2,296,103 cents. You have the motion for discussion.
(Inaudible) be approved. Vouchers, check for 163655, 163919, and 583 through 589, amount of $2,296,103 cents.
Second for discussion. One question for the court, page 16 of 37, check number 163855, co filed solutions, Julie, this is Air Division 143,000. It looks like image, I'm not sure if that's part of the back load.
It is, that's what y'all are operating on, because um, not that we're in dark.
And I see two accounts, just the general administrative and then the 235, which is how the savings are registered.
The 235 is the one, yes.
Okay. And then 143 is coming out of the general?
Yes.
Okay. And it's just part of backloading those old images?
Yes, it is. Any questions? I have Judge. Any more questions? Have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. This is 5-0, thank you. Number three, insurance report to recognize the issue of the funded court case or anything unusual.
Nothing unusual.
So recognized. Number four, elections to consider and approve the following orders for the November 3rd Constitutional Amendment and Special Election. A, you always have so many, too many orders.
I know, that's really sad.
But A, it's order appointing election judge and alternate judge establishing hours of operation for early voting, holding place and establishing the maximum number of cards. B is order appointing early voting ballot board judge and establishing the maximum number of cards for the ballot board.
Yes, and you guys have received a new copy of that order this morning for the election judges and alternates because of the error that I made earlier. You will see that we are not going to be having voting on Sunday and this lines up with Randall County. Our hours will also line up fairly well with Randall County in this particular election. We will have new early voting locations, first time in many of these places, and but other than that, everything else is pretty much the same as it's been. Any, you have any questions on this?
So Malin, this will, will this be the election that vote centers will take place?
Yes.
Okay.
I was hoping for a nice sleek little constitutional amendment election, and it's not turning out that way.
So to that, as we get closer to the timeline, will we be informed as a court about vote centers and the public communication?
Yes, we will be. You will be. And one thing on here I am not bringing today is the mobile voting. With this starting in three new places and then 16 new places, I wanted to hold that one back. I think that's gonna be a bit too much. That plus, we're expecting another entity to join in this election in the next week or so, and they will need their own voting location for early voting. So I am holding that back. What we'll do instead to serve those voters is we'll make sure that they are informed of how we can get them lined up with ballot voting in this election.
If we approve the order of appointing election judges and alternate judge, establishing hours of operation for early voting, holding places, establish the maximum number of cards.
Okay, have a motion and a second, Commissioner Wong, move the second patient. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Val Zuma, say, say where you are.
I'm helping me.
Okay, number five, elections to consider and appoint officers for the central county station.
Yes, and this is very, the same as it's been in the past. We have Stephanie has been our presiding judge and I'm just gonna have to look down and see my other target. There's nothing here that is again different than it's been in the past.
I make a motion that we approve appointing officers for the central county station for the November 3rd 2015 Constitutional Amendment and Special Election.
(Inaudible) Kelly, all in favor, raise your hand, please. 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, five county extension office to consider an act upon agent positions, the county extension agent for HU to Delmon.
Good morning. Good to see you, everybody again.
Good to see you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here as always. We're getting closer to working our way towards a full staff in the Potter County Extension Office, so we're excited about that. Want to introduce you to Tina Hicks. I think most of you probably know Tina. She's been working in the extension office as an office manager and program assistant. She recently completed her bachelor's degree from the University of Texas, Permian Basin, and so she was interested in making the transition to an extension professional position. And we appreciate Commissioner Regean, Commissioner Church for your involvement in the interview process. We had several qualified applicants, and in the end, we found that Tina had the experiences necessary to make her a very successful extension agent in our opinion. And so what we're here today to do is present her to you for your consideration. If you have any questions of Tina, we would certainly entertain those at this time.
Congratulations, Tina.
Well, congratulations, you haven't voted.
You're right.
I make a motion that we approve Tina for this position.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand.
I applaud you.
Congratulations. Judge, I would echo Brandon's comments in the interview process. There were certainly quite a few qualified candidates, and I think it goes without saying Tina's really stepped up in that office amongst many agents missing, and I honestly don't know where we'd be without her. So thank you for doing that and thank you for your leadership and many blessings moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Moby.
Judge, can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
On item number four, did you include, Mr. Church, did you include in your motion the early voting ballot board as well?
Yeah, but I can't.
I was thinking, because y'all didn't vote on Adam being.
They put it together. He mentioned both of them.
Did you? Okay, alright, thank you.
Are you sure? So did you do?
Alright.
Did we need to do it again?
I just, I just sit here, but Stephanie gets something different, so she probably can, so she probably right.
I know she's gonna admit it, she's probably wrong. Hey Joe, let me see.
Okay, number seven, sheriffs and constables fees, consider an act upon study in approving the sheriffs and constable seven across station 2016. Good morning.
Good morning. I know the sheriff's office is sleeping, all their fees the same. We had a couple of changes. There's a new writ, somehow in the state, they gotta call it civil standby. It's not a civil standby, it is a writ. We've added on there, it's like a order of property retrieval, a writ of retrieval. It's, you know, the police department uses civil standby, sheriff's office doesn't, they already do them for free. That's where you go out on the domestic stand by. And parties are agreeing to let the woman or male get stuff out of the house. This one is more detailed, where it's a judge's order to remove property from a house, and if person in the house refuses, we use force to get it. So that's why that got put in there.
And that's House Bill 2486, that's a new bill that we have, well, I tended to update that straight up, update, train, that's a new bill that was, we are required, because it's gotta go through the JP, and we are required to get that. So that's why I just added on. And we also added additionally, we do a bunch of writ of possession.
Possession.
We do a whole lot of writ of possession, and we have a timeframe on those writ of possession. What we added to get those executed, we give a limit of two hours, and after those two hours, we request an additional fee to go.
From the William Board.
Exactly. And that is at the bottom of the service.
What will happen is, is if we go out and it goes over two hours, landlords are gonna know that if it goes over two hours, they're gonna be charged an additional $50, because they're staying, we run five or six of these in a day, and that's where we actually have to go out, stand there while the landlord has to screen with everybody's stuff that's left in the house into the front yard. You know, we have landlords showing up with two people that you can't move a four bedroom house out in two hours with two people, so.
Exactly.
That's why, and apparently they're starting to do it downstate, charge over that two hours, charge extra money for anything over two hours.
And those are our only charges.
That's our only change, is the fees.
Carrie, these fees just go into the special revenue fund for the JP?
No, actually, just into the general fund.
Yeah, that's our service fees.
And the writ of retrieval?
writ and retrieve.
Do you do that often? I know you mentioned.
It's brand new, so we don't know.
Yeah.
Now, somehow when it got labeled civil standby, my personal opinion is, I can see the police department saying, oh, well, we don't do these anymore. You need to go to the JP's office and get a, get one, get an order to do it, as a way for them to not have to do it anymore. I don't know if they will. You know, somehow, downstate, it got listed as a civil standby, and it's not a civil standby. It kinda is, but it's a lot more detailed.
And any interference into that, that process, we can actually arrest and it'll be a class B offense. I mean, they can raise offense of any interference and duty to execute that.
And I talked to one of the constables down in Travis County, he says he doesn't know how many of these there will be, because these people to get one of these are gonna have to jump through a lot of hoops to get one. They gotta prove that they're on the lease, that they're only allowed to get certain property, but it's there. I mean, it could have been covered under all other writs, but we wanted to make sure, because this, we don't know what's gonna happen with this.
So Carrie, your point about the money going into the general fund, is that categorized a good way to get rid of, what they're bringing in?
Yes, it is. The new challenge seems to involve this, I think it is.
Yeah, I mean, you see there, however much civil fees we brought in, that's, that's our total. You know, I know the JP office, like on a writ of possession, it's $155,000, $150,000, that's our service fee, $5 to JP.
So the fee, the 150, the new one, the constable 2486, that is on the individual requesting it, so this would have been, they were denied access to the home for any reason, and there's something in that home that.
That meets the requirements.
At least, so medical records, medicine, financial documents, something they need to get.
Immediate.
Immediate. They go through the court.
Judge, I see the, the.
Alright, I wanted to add to that. It's not just if they're locked out of the house. That would be a writ of writ entry, where the landlord locks them out of the house. This is your boyfriend and girlfriend?
Yes.
You have five, you leave, and he won't let you have your stuff.
The occupant of the house, exactly.
It's like a civil standby. They have to come in, they have to fill out paperwork, they have to file a new civil suit, and the fees are $41, and they have to file that to even start the process of doing the standby.
And then when we get involved, then we can go out there, we use whatever force necessary to get that property. Now, for indigenous people, they still have the option to file the paupers affidavit and all that, and they can get it, which we figure a lot of that will happen, and it does happen, because, you know, it's a domestic woman's been booted out of her house.
And we provide that as an option during the screening process based on their income? Don't let them know what their options are?
They'll come in, we can't deny them if they don't have the funds to file the fees, and so then they have to fill out the engine paperwork. The JP reviews that, accepts or not accepts it. We can also charge those fees to that other person. So the person that's not letting them have their property, those court costs could be charged. They have so many days to, like, answer the suit. You know, I wanna have a court trial, this is my stuff, whatever it is. They have so many days to answer it, and at that time during the trial, we can order them to pay the court cost, and they can get a judgment against them for the court cost. Okay? Do we ever get it? I've never seen it.
And when I talked to Travis County Constable, he's up there in the JPC, he said, he doesn't know how much of this is gonna happen. He says, when they got the law, they pushed for this law, it wasn't exactly what they wanted, but they got it on the books now so they can start tweaking it for the years and the next legislators.
You got a lot of writs.
Yes, well, and, and there's another one, new one, that we didn't add in there, we just let it go under the, any other writ.
That's the other last.
It's called a writ of standby. If they're, if somebody's wanting to repossess an aircraft out there for, they will come and, they can come and get an order, and we will go out there and standby while they repossess the aircraft, make sure there's no violence. So that will just get hit this year too, so.
Okay, I have till October the 1st to turn this in, so you have to go online, do it for special, I don't know, submit it. You do it?
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve setting and, what setting, the sheriff with no changes and constable civil service process fees for 2016.
Second?
I'm sorry.
Number motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number eight, county clerk records are not clean. Consider an act upon dropping the county clerk archive plan for the 2015, 2016, and the budget.
This is just something I have to do every year according to the statute, and this is what one of the expenditures was, that I had on the vouchers, that y'all already approved that we do co-also. We're getting there. We've got images loaded back to 1962, I'm worried. Yeah, you're bored, so. I wasn't bored, am I? Thank you.
The 1972 to 1990 are completed.
Yes.
What, what is the timeline that you think would take to bring us up to date? I mean, or to get all the files scanned?
I don't know, we haven't got to 1888, so.
I'm working towards that.
I don't know, I'm likely to say within the next three years, but I think that's being very, it's aggressive on my part.
And then the three points that you have there are only if your funds allow, right? The three items, part of the plan.
And of course, the work we do depends on the funds that we have, since that comes out of the records on the tax. So they already have another batch for me to load, but I don't have the funds to pay for it, so.
My motion to get out the county clerk archive, archive plan for 2015 through 2016.
Sure. Any motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. 5-0, thank you. Number nine, Admiral Potter label count, voluntary search, which no hazard mitigation plan. Set the date for public hearing to hear public comment on the revised hazard mitigation plan and take further action necessary. Okay, this is the date to review. I talked to John Peel about this at the ERPC meeting on Tuesday. It was my understanding, Dave, that, that John said we actually have use of public hearing in the legislature's court, right?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll just set the date, according to here, all we've got, new release published notice, and John, by the, by the last course, as far as the resolution.
Do you want to have a copy of that resolution?
We'll do it till next.
Yeah, you can leave that till next time. So we'll set the public hearing, message for the unit, we'll, we'll submit the publication to the paper, to the House Paper, to the Senate, so.
So Sabina, were you asking for the resolution needs mid prior to the public?
I was just asking in terms of referencing that. I'm not sure if our actual, if we're approving a resolution or just hoping that public.
No, all we're doing is setting the date today.
Okay. Motion to do that?
So, okay.
24.
Move we set the open hearing on the revised hazard mitigation plan for August 2.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. And at that time, Dave, we can do the resolution also.
Do you get, will you adapt Jones' grant and provide any comments?
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, number 10, equipment donations to consider and act upon, the donation of a 1997 Ford ambulance from the City Town消防队 Fire Department. It has made value of the 162 dollars. Richard, do you have the ones?
This is the, the ambulance that Richard looked at during budget, and it's no cost to us, and we just need to sign this letter to accept it.
As our discussion and budget hearing, this will be replaced our recap van.
Okay, what kind of issues is this particular, I have one to add.
It's just got a bigger box on it, so we can carry the equipment that the rehab.
I'm talking about repairs, anything like that, you'd be aware of.
I've driven it, everything seems to be in good shape. It's gonna need batteries, and air traditionally charged on it, other than that, I haven't found any problems with it. So, the van we have overheats and doesn't run very well anyway, so we're, we're better off to have it to begin with, so.
So this won't be replacing or increasing your fleet, so you'll let go of the.
That's correct.
A little bit of the acceptance of the 1997 Ford ambulance from the City Town Fire Department yesterday, Dave, it was.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number 11, children maintenance, to consider an act upon agreement for children maintenance at the county courthouse with TDI Industries, the amount of $8,090 from the DCP and Cooperative Contract Number R 50055-TX-70055. Funds currently budgeted. Oh, wait.
Good, however you got it. This is just a renewal of the contract that we have every year, our children maintenance. It includes our air-cooled chiller on the roof and our water-cooled chiller.
So it's gonna increase, or it's at the same price?
That's an increase of around $10,000, I believe.
Yeah, we, our current contract is with Carrier, and it's expiring at the end of this month. The TD Industries will be, they're not a new company to us, but they'll be a new company in this building, and by using them for the same service, it's about $1,000. I think maintenance is comfortable with them, working on it. If they, they've worked with them, they already have a contract with us, so they're putting, so they've been working with them, that's true.
Yeah, they'll actually send their service tanks to be factory trained with Carrier to be certified.
I make a motion that we approve the agreement for chiller maintenance for the county courthouse with TDI Industries, the amount of $8,090 from cooperative contract.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. 5-0. I think you're still up there, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Number 12, emergency equipment replacement to consider and act upon, replacing two 35 ton air-cooled chillers at Santa Fe Building, the amount of $126,025, using TD, TD Industries from the DCP and Cooperative Contract Number R 50055-TX-70059, funding being determined.
Yeah, I'm good with this. This is actually the set of chillers that we use in the fall and winter months. It's very crucial for Jason's operation in keeping it pure and cool. Right now, we're running the water-cooled chiller that is scheduled to receive a compressor next fiscal budget. We have two water-cooled chillers, one of them needs a compressor, the other one's running great, keeping up with the building, but it's gonna be at a point where it's gonna be too cold to run your water-cooled chiller outside, and then you lean on your air-cooled chiller to take over less than the load, the amount of energy used to provide your occupants with HVAC. So this current equipment that we have is, was used when we purchased the Santa Fe building, it was relocated to the current location that it is. We've changed the compressors on it, probably 10 plus years ago, tried to utilize it as much as we possibly could, but at this point, we're drawing more power from it than what we should be, and not getting the numbers out of it what we should, and and upon doing that, we actually had one of them just completely quit on us. So we've had to abandon that operation, go with water chiller, and with the temperatures slowly dropping, hopefully, we're gonna run out of chill water service very quick.
So, Carrie, we're gonna need $126,000.
Since you asked that question, we've actually been working with Mr. Jim Watt, and ever since we did the, the route that Santa Fe Building was qualified for a bunch of incentives through XL. He's an engineer, mechanical engineer, that's been working with us, and he's currently working with me on this to see what cash incentives there are offered by XL. But they have to see that we are fully committed to doing the project before they, before they get involved. They have received everything that you guys have today, including some detailed pictures about the air-cooled chillers that, that we're talking about replacing. So it's already, it's already been brought up to them that we're looking to receive funds in this area for assistance, but unfortunately, it won't be immediate. We'll have to complete the project, and then come up and inspect everything, and then we'll make the deal.
Do we know what's final out there for incentives?
Correct, we don't know. I'm still awaiting response from Jim on what possibilities might be. He is actually in town this week, so we're, we're working on to get something out there.
What are, what are the other incentives in terms of the dollar amount that they did provide? I remember them coming to court and us kind of talking through later, look and go walk through.
What Jim did was he took a detailed look of several of our large consuming energy consumption, as far as the district courts, the county courts, the Santa Fe building, and we've, we've placed some schedules to try and reduce some costs in utilities throughout the months, and we've, we've not completed a full year yet, but Carrie's assisted me in putting that on the spreadsheet to see where we're at and see what kinds of cost things we are. But for instance, just a quick view, I think January, or no, it was February, we were somewhere around a $3,000 difference, just for that month, on the, on the three major buildings in downtown alone, in reducing of utility costs. So eventually, we'll, we'll see some money come back from that also.
So that's, that's just a tiny change of, of how to power the utilities.
Yeah.
Based on how well we do over the next year, then there may be some potential incentives coming back to us, is that right?
Well, with your annual budget of, of Santa Fe building of $225,000 in utilities alone, we're probably not going to get close to that anymore, because we are reducing costs every year, or every month, basically. So it's possible that you'll start seeing some of that money come back.
But XL is not directly giving us incentives, they're just working with us.
No, they're paying, they're paying for, for a mechanical engineer to come in and take a five-tooth comb through our buildings and see, see that we are doing things properly.
And then, so that, to that point, that's what you're indicating, that would be their support with this potential project, is to come in and make sure we're conserving as we can.
Jim's, Jim's already looked at the spec sheets of the ones that I'm proposing to use, and he gives the thumbs up there, and also he's assisted with, with presenting it to XL for consideration of cash incentives.
So this would be different, where there could be some cash incentives.
Absolutely, yeah. Anytime we go in and we make our buildings more efficient for XL not to have to, you know, send us so much power, they're gonna, they're gonna give us incentives in some sort. in some sort. That comes in roofs, mechanical equipment, you know, I mean, numerous things.
So you have one chiller that's down right now, right? One is totally inoperable.
Both, pretty much.
So what's the timeline? If we approve this today, what's the timeline for it to get that replaced?
Manufacturer, manufacturer has the specs and everything available. They're waiting to produce them. They're waiting to be available right now to see if they need to go into production. And I've, I've told everybody, we've got to have this done before the fall because if we don't, we're not going to have any cooling this winter. And we have issues with cooling up the computer room every day, so.
It's always about you, my dear.
Yeah.
My experience happens.
And so there's some, are there any other facilities, some accounts? I know we're nearing the end of the fiscal year at high holds, I guess.
I'll let you speak.
No.
I did evaluate the utility accounts this morning and you probably get by with a couple thousand dollars in accounts, fifteen out of the district courts and fifteen out of San Fe, total sixty-five.
On the utilities, not the building.
Just got the utilities.
Yeah, and some of them. One of the things...
Contingency, say the only place.
We do not raise our utilities. We put it in there every year in budget just to make you worry that it could be based increases. Like they say, if you're reducing utility operational costs, open an extra budget, that'll be some type of reduction in present to as far as utility based off this one year spend.
Yeah, with the new roof and the schedule changes and progress that we've had with Mr. Watts' assistant, I really feel like we're, we're going to see it. There's no way you're not going to.
Carrie, what's left in the contingency account?
About three hundred fifty-six thousand.
So we'd be pulling roughly sixty-one thousand from contingency and we're offsetting it with sixty-five in utilities.
So it's doable. You have to do it.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I don't want to sit here and say that. All that is your decision, but as me, you know, a little my position here, we really need you guys to do this. It's almost a gamble, you know?
And I'd hate to lose everything in IT.
Right, I make a motion that we approve replacing two thirty-five ton air-cooled chillers at the San Fe building in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand and twenty-five dollars. Funds to come from sixty-five thousand in utilities and sixty-one thousand and twenty-five dollars for the contingency.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, Ray. Please.
Good idea.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Number thirteen, county constable precinct number two to accept a resignation of Maurice Jackson, precinct two, and to consider an act upon options for filling the vacancy for this position until the next term election, number twenty sixteen. Maurice gave his letter of resignation last Monday, probably. We do have this forum whenever we meet again, specific appreciation for everything he's done. I get, Dave, what is the actual date of who is considered today?
You accept the resignation of age today.
Okay. So we just have to vote on accepting or not? Yes. I have a motion to accept the resignation.
And who accepts the resignation of Maurice, Maurice Jackson, constable precinct two?
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, Ray. Please. And then be to consider an act upon options for filling the vacancy for this position until the next term election.
And Judge, I do have a couple of slides in terms of presentation if you're okay with that, but whenever you're ready. I'll save the discussion.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, equipment, is that open, turned in? Well, I see the keys.
Turned his keys into me, I gave them to Mike.
But we just purchased the whole standard ammunition and I just don't know what all that's been added.
We did an inventory of this physical tract assets and all those were accounted for, but as far as stuff under that holster is ammunition.
Okay, good. Does anybody know where his gun ammunition are, anybody?
I asked, I asked him about it, he said, because he went to the range here, what police do, spent all day for it. He said he shod it up. I don't know. I mean, he was there a whole day, I know, I didn't go with him.
And Judge, I'd be happy to follow up with him. I mean, he did indicate that he would help transition. Any questions that maybe ask the center? So I'd be happy to follow up with him on any questions we have in terms of inventory and what that transition should look like.
Is the gun his?
All the guns.
Okay, his, that's his, that's his. We didn't purchase that gun for him. Okay.
Yeah, I do have a couple of slides if we can get them up here. So a couple of comments that I just wanted to share before we take, took formal action on whether to fill the vacancy as it relates to precinct two. So I added a couple of bullet points from the Texas Association of Amis just in terms of what constables do throughout the day as a certified peace officer assisting with boards, with court order documents, which we just spoke to about today, assisting with truancies. But I did want to add what I thought was really critical in precinct two. Oh, in our guide, excuse me. I did want to add some additional duties. I worked with Maurice directly to see what is that activity like in precinct two because obviously we have an option to not fill the vacancy. I am here supporting that we fill the vacancy and highlighting a few of the items that are actively going on in precinct two. So I did want to just share to the court some community service. He indicated a working relationship with every school in the precinct. There's two active neighborhood watch patrols, has assisted with our child support corps, assisted with county attorney's office and investigations, the rating, and I'll look to Dave if he chooses to add anything onto that. This is directly from Maurice that I wanted to share with the court. Firearms instructor for West Texas area and then a bailiff assistance for justice of the peace, number two. And then on the next slide, and I just have a couple here, just some important dates that I'd like everybody to consider. So the final filing date for candidate is December fourteenth of twenty fifteen. The primary election is March of twenty sixteen and the general November of twenty sixteen. So the newly elected constable at that point takes office January twenty seventeen.
Actually, the, in this situation, since you're filling a vacancy, the constable would take place and on their election in the general, in the general election. So the compliments are, because that's the way vacancy works. So soon as, as that person qualifies for office, in other words, the votes are certified in this case, they would, they would take office. They don't have to wait until January. This is an expert, that you're filling this office.
And then the next slide that I just would like to share there is, is the recommendation. So I'm requesting the court to support that we appoint this position. I would like to do this with a couple of parameters. Should the court agree to move forward with this, we'd like to publicly, as we all know, this is active and in public, but publicly announce the vacancy via a press release with the requirements of constable as well as the precinct boundaries because often that's a question of kind of where do I live and am I eligible? So I would like to do that with the press release on behalf of the court and then a countywide communication to make sure that everyone is certainly a part of that process. In that recommendation, I'm indicating that we would form a committee to start to entertain those that indicated they would be qualified for the position and this is who I have slated to serve on the committee, the county judge, because I would like to list your office as the primary contact if someone indicates that they're interested. I, as the commissioner, since I am elected in precinct two, a constable representation, which they indicated they would like to be a part of that process, and I think that would be helpful if we chose to do so. Our JP and number two, and then the county attorney's office, because obviously I know that that has been traditional, that you be a part of that. I would like to open the vacancy for seven business days. The count will kind of start tomorrow and the recommendation is we would start interviews after those seven business days and come back to court with a recommendation the next commissioner's court, August twenty-fourth. There are, there are already interested individuals in precinct two that are active peace officers. So I share all that to say that I think there's interest. I think the duties of the office are certainly needed in precinct two and I would love your support to fill this vacancy. And I know the constables are present today. If you choose to, to share anything, I know that they did want to be present to support before appointing the vacancy. Any of our constables, would you like to share anything?
I'd like to say a couple things. I know there's been a history of constables that it just hasn't been, you know, just perfect, but I do believe the current conflict really made a difference and has brought light to this position. And this position is definitely needed to work in there. The constable position is what that constable make up and that office can definitely be a successful office if it ran professionally and properly. So I really believe that constable position needs to be filled and provide that, that security for that court as well as conduct their process service. I mean, the work there, the constable that's selected just have to be willing and able to make sure that, that office is running successfully. So we really ask that the court consider placing somebody.
Thank you. Thank you. Judge, what?
I would like to speak. I've had a working constable and I've had a non-working constable and sometimes I have constable that would disappear for six months because they got mad at budget. All the, and the sheriff's office is absolutely fantastic. They're great. They, they took on paperwork, school cases. We send out summons to the mail and I realize school cases are changing because this part's not going to. So wherever they end up, we send out summons. If they don't appear for court, we do not issue a warrant for their arrest because we don't know the mail service. We don't know that they got it. We don't know that they moved and we just didn't get it back. We issue a new summons and the constable serve that. When we had the sheriff's office doing it, they were absolutely overwhelmed and bogged down. They have officers that already have duties. They have civil officers that already have duties. We're putting evictions on them. There's a lot of evictions. This is not their job, it's the constable's job. Bailiff in our court, when I didn't have a constable, we had court, you never know. You never know when you're going to have that case that you need that constable there. And I had many cases because you have to schedule to have somebody come in. Then I didn't think that I needed one when I really did. Sheriff's office is great, security comes up anytime you need them, but that's not the same as having them there. The constable is there and it's nice to have the same person consistently. They also back each other up. They go on the rig possessions together. I, I think that it's, it's office that needs to be filled. I don't think it should be vacant for a year and three months or however long it is. I, I think that there is a need to have one. And that's just for my point. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just go along with what everyone else says and I was, when Maurice gave his resignation, I was there with him and, and the reason that we wanted to be involved in the process, if you do decide to appoint somebody is because we feel that when there was the four of us, we have built a lot from what it was and it was bad. I mean, you go downstate, you were, Pahr County was used as examples of what not to do back in the day and we've come a long ways, we've built, I think, you know, it's a good thing for our county. Maurice was out in his neighborhood, well, I'm out in my neighborhood a lot. We're more than just available for the servant papers. I mean, we do our law enforcement. We have citizens call us that won't call the police department because one, sometimes I can, we can get there faster and two, we give them a more personalized service on where they'll move them, then they'll get, you know, nothing against the police department, they're just overwhelmed and we give them a little more personalized service. And that's why we wanted to be involved in the process because one, we're going to be working with them and, you know, we'll do like Maurice did with us, took us under his wing and helped us learn. You know, you go to all schools in the world, but still you, there's still a learning curve. We would want to do the same thing to the person we're going to be able to work with and, you know, make Pahr County a better place.
Thank you. Judge, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. We're going to do the right thing with one constable. I think I'll have that.
Do you, do you have a need for someone to reflect, to help you in court or anybody else?
The constable serves a key role in the court. They serve as our ballot, they serve as our processor, they do all the process and they go out and assist with the evictions and they help us in the community when we have little problems. The constable right there just addressed that with a more personalized approach. It's a key position and like I said, I'm sure we're going to do the right things.
Okay, and Jim?
Well, I'm sure that I will be accused of, because this is precinct two position, but I would say the same thing whether it was one, two, or three. And we just got a proposed budget and it shows we're two point seven million dollars in the hole. We are not up to our ninety day reserve and that concerns me a great deal. And I don't, and I think that if we go ahead and appoint someone, that it will affect the election, except two is for that position. I think we, we pretty much, the appointment will be for the person who will go through the election probably and be elected. I just sense who the electorate have their chance and vote for this person to go into that position. So I probably will not support the appointment.
I think basically my feelings have already been expressed principally about the need for a constable. I can recall when precinct four was out, without a constable for a while and I want to public there, because I did properly to constable two, Maurice done an outstanding job helping in precinct four and that was a tremendous amount to do, not only in other sports, serving capacity for bailiff, but I don't see how he had the time to do all of it, but it was throughout both precincts and I know the constables back each other and I have heard a lot of very positive things about our constable positions over the last years and they have really done a young job of representing this county. I understand the budget, I understand the numbers that we're in, but I understand also as far as the representation of the every citizen throughout this county and ensuring that they are looked upon equally as far as the representation and the safety and security that this county provides. So I think by withholding that would be not doing a good service to that precinct, but also I appreciate your comment as far as the appointing process and the electoral process and there was a discussion on that, but having it publicized and for seven days, I think you're probably going to get all of those who will be interested that will apply. And I understand that the electoral process is a moving process as far as not giving a leg up on the respected person for the appointing process, but it is what it is, we'll look at the whole, the whole picture. I think it will be certain this, this county will go ahead and run the process and the interview that will take place.
Well, I'd like to comment a little bit on this subject. I remember when I first got in the office, we had constables and wondered what in the world would these guys do? They didn't do anything, two in particular, I mentioned, the manager, because everybody knows who they are. Now, as I said, against putting those positions in place, things are a little different now with the constable. We have now agreed that they are doing a lot more work than these, these folks were doing, but I'm sharing the thoughts on this. I think that the people need to make this choice and this is the way I am right now.
I echo what Leon was saying earlier until I heard the testimony from the four people that spoke about it. I, I do believe it's needed and we need to go ahead and fill that for now and it probably will be the same person that we're voting for as far as it is. So I would... So I would, I would go ahead and go along with the option to fill that vacancy.
I'd like to follow that up with a motion to, like a motion to approve the appointment of the vacancy for a constable precinct two, and to formulate the subcommittee as included in the presentation.
Certainly.
Okay. Your motion, second all in favor, which right hand? Three all opposed. Three complete.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, Poughkeepsie County, tried to share anything on that today. Number fifteen, the jail report, we have five hundred and sixteen in our jail. Must have been a really good weekend, all I could say. One hundred of those are females, so.
Sheriff, is that the first time we've got over the hundred mark on the females?
Well, we've got, we're actually going to bring you with that three percent.
I was wondering if it's any relation to tax free week. Body or things.
We've seen a certain, a lot of shoplifting going on during this time.
Okay. Okay, I'm sixteen county insurance side, so we may.
Nothing they ever worked.
Okay. We don't have any surgery session today, correct? The agenda items for next round, I don't think the mitigation plan. We'll go to the alleged workshop number seventeen, alleged workshop for precinct year twenty thirteen for sixteen, who's got pleasure, who's present, standing by the course for this year sixteen taking next basis script. Okay. I just felt the mood change. I did submit a proposed budget this morning, and I'll work. And to be totally honest with you, I really didn't get a chance to review it that much. I asked Kerry to help me out, I was out of pocket for everything by days, and Kerry went through it with me and for me, and made some cuts. Took out all the salary requests that everyone asked for. I added a two percent across the board salary for everybody. Took out the fire truck, took out the road bridge pickup. I shared the cost with the record manager and scanner with Julie. Thank you so much, Julie, for the, for the. Constable vehicle that we were going to buy, I would have talked to the sheriff, we have a Tahoe, and it's going to be a charger, but the Tahoe's in better shape instead of buying a new vehicle this year. I propose that we use that, that Tahoe. What year is that, Sheriff? Remember?
Twelve.
We twelve. We're buying one Tahoe, we were, we were scheduled to buy two, from cutting out the one and just using this Tahoe for one year until next year. You know what year it is?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Which, which constable is that one going to?
Oh, we speak on it. We can, you may.
Wow, the constable was coming up. Sheriff, that's in two thousand twelve, and the condition that you relate that, that this bill over here?
Eight of you sitting up there right now that are ready for auction, it's the best one that we have, a hundred and fifteen thousand miles on it. It's one that we were actually going to keep until it got shot, and they wanted to run the picture because you can get more money out of it, so we ended up getting it, still running good. This has got a hundred and fifty bucks, it's got a hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay, and I, my question is, the courts, I know both myself as well as constable, there are points improving as to why the points of us both having a new vehicle, and I just wanted, wanted a question, of course, as to how did you come up with a decision that precinct one is more deserving than precinct four?
It's not a personal thing, I guess, definitely not a personal thing. We just had to cut one of them out. We're doing the big ticket items, you see, we took away the fire truck, took away the road bridge pickup, just taking away some big items, and that's one of the big items. Next year, we'll get you one, we'll get one next year. We're not next year still, we can't do it this year. Okay. And this vehicle is good, all we're going to do is spend three thousand dollars to get the, to get the equipment that you need.
But this vehicle has been shot up, it has a hundred and fifty plus thousand miles on it, and so the county is going to spend money to get all my equipment transferred over to that particular vehicle, and then the next year have to spend more money to get another vehicle. I'm, I'm just really not understanding that concept.
Well, it gets forty-two thousand dollars back in our, back in our, back in, back in, and so instead of forty-five thousand coming out, we're getting forty-two in.
And you guys decided that precinct one is the one that need the vehicle more?
I don't know, I don't think we specifically said it was precinct. We just said we're cutting out a vehicle. Kerry, we say specifically what it's going to be?
To my, to my knowledge, precinct one vehicle was left in, and precinct four vehicle was removed. And that's why I'm questioning the courts in response to that.
I don't know. Daryl, can you, can you explain to me why?
I asked, when I asked Paula about it, I didn't understand the budget, that big capital expenditures are in a different deal, and she said that constable one's vehicle was still there, because it's not listed on this little paper we got, but constable four's vehicle.
Okay, so, so I'm asking you to tell me why, why your vehicle, why, why, what are you driving right now?
A two thousand nine Ford pickup truck.
Okay. So you want the Tahoe?
Correct.
Right. What are you driving right now, Daryl?
I'm in the Tahoe currently, yes, ma'am.
How many miles on it?
It has a hundred, and I believe this, it went up to like one fifteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand.
I think that also, I'm not sure, you know, get the court for a lawyer, I think there was an assessment done of both vehicles.
Right, my ex-buddy.
It was determined by the assessment, I don't think by the court, that there were two vehicles needed to be purchased, because they were being mandated, they were being in the, in the accountable job for quite often, and I think they were being jump-started. There were another issue that we continued to look on, and that was the initial focus of needing those two vehicles moving forward.
I agree. I haven't specified out which one we're.
Maurice has some vehicles now available. Why, what's wrong with that?
That's, that's other new, that's going to be compared to what constable.
What, what, why don't we just switch them out and give him the Tahoe and give Maurice a vehicle?
And I'm sure that you guys can tell, I'm a five foot nine and a half female, and Maurice's vehicle was adopted for Maurice, and I have been here to have Maurice's vehicle during the time my vehicle was not in operation, and it's very uncomfortable. If I was five foot six, five foot four, I probably wouldn't be.
We're going to have to hire a short constable.
Yeah. It has a little specification sometimes.
Let me just say that, you know, all these cuts are tough. We don't want to make any cuts, but we also have, we're also looking at, as I said, over a two million dollar deficit as it is. So we have to make some tough decisions, and I know it's not what everyone's going to want.
Right.
But at some point, we have to make the tough decisions, and so.
And Commissioner, I feel that.
Reasonably, we have to do it, and so do we have to say, you know, we're giving it to number one because X, Y, Z, or are we just saying we're going to give one?
Kerry has, Kerry needs to speak to this.
I, I would like to explain why Paula told constable courts that it was constable four that was, she has not been in on the budget discussions, and in order to get the formula to work, I had to cut it somewhere, and that's just where I cut it to get the formula to work. It's not a decision of which constable was just.
Which one, yeah.
And, and they asked me, your children, we could have explained.
Okay, okay. Okay. So you, you said we did not specify it was you, we just said we're cutting a vehicle.
And, and just the only reason why I specified that it was precinct four, because we did prior to the court being in session, notice that it was precinct one that still has his vehicle, precinct four doesn't have a vehicle.
Okay.
And we both proved that we're both in need of a dependable vehicle. We are law enforcement, just like any other law enforcement, we need a dependable vehicle. So that's the reason why I brought that up, because my, mine was specifically removed, and I didn't understand why. And I just asked courts if it be fair enough by us towards all positions, all positions are important, so.
Okay. Thank you. So I think through that, they're looking for certification of whose vehicle it will be. I think too that.
I, I think that's right, but I want to make sure that the vehicle, of course, it depends on the vehicle in order to transit that transit, and I, I know the sheriff's kids are a good vehicle, but I guess in the terms of what you have in your inventory, is it a good vehicle or for those vehicles that are out there on the oxygen block, is it the best of those that are not being that, uh, durable and moving forward? So that's what I'm trying to get clear in the head. Do we have a clear session of a vehicle question?
Well, Daryl, your vehicle had like thirty-five thousand dollars less than the one that we're talking about, correct?
Definitely, definitely, but my current vehicle also, I mean, it's a known fact, I have been picked up loose, I had to ride with constables on these, on these occasions because that vehicle is just not, is not stable. That's my own reason for being up there. And my other question is, with that the sheriff's vehicle, I don't understand, but why does precinct four have to get the hand down of the other vehicle?
Well, I don't know if we're going to jump to the only end of precinct four right now, but I want to make sure that, that the mileage factor is not the determining factor of that vehicle is, is, is really, it's got some other issues that see beyond the black mileage. So the question goes back again to Sheriff, as to the assessment, have we made a, a clear assessment of, in that vehicle is ready to move forward and, and the duties of, of any one of the constables?
The only thing I can tell you is, like, the one that, the one in question is one we were going to keep until after we were involved in it, shoot, after it got shot and radiated. When that happened, we took it offline, we weren't going to fix it, so we got rid of it, we replaced it. We kept another one instead of that. We have had that since fixed, and we've not been in it since then, so, you know, but it was one we were going to keep until that happened. And where we're going to put it on the oxygen block for the other fixing, the other reason why we fixed it was because we could get more money if it was fixed versus sitting out there with a hole in the radiator.
So Sheriff, is that vehicle in a condition that you would consider putting one of your patrol team in?
That's one of us, it was one of our, we were going to pull it out, we were going to pull it out of control and put it into a vehicle out of, out of corrections.
In its current state, with the bullet in the radiator?
All of that's been fixed.
So you would consider that vehicle in appropriate shape, that you would put it in someone in patrol? And I'm only saying patrol because they're out in the community and driving it at high speeds, it's, it's different versus at the detention center and monitoring.
I would tell you for a hundred and fifty thousand miles, it's, it's probably inducing the life if you're out there going pursuits and that kind of stuff, that's where we're running for one and then we found it.
That's great, thank you.
And that's, I mean, that's all I can tell you, I mean, but it, it is a, a running vehicle, and like I said, we're going to keep it anyway, but except for that, we're going to do it.
Yeah, constable works, will your vehicle last another year?
I don't know. I, transition's starting to slip again, and I guess, you know, if I had to, I'd put another four, five thousand, and then keep it running for another year.
I would suggest to courts that I will keep my current vehicle and just run it, and just don't run anymore. I mean, with the, with the mileage being less than this current one, and it hasn't been shot up anything, I mean, with the court, we're considering, highly considering me on this next budget, I, I just feel that, that vehicle is, this is not precinct four, and that's just not it. That's just sure, you guys trying to get me comfortable.
You're saying you'd rather just stick with what you have as long as it's.
We've made a decision, who's getting that vehicle yet.
No, I don't think so.
Well, my suggestion here would be, constable works, and they did say that his vehicle's going to last another year, I would be suggested to have that, have the vehicle, I mean, that's, that's my thought.
But I would say from constable works, and, and I don't have a foot in the game either way, I'm just, I know that I went out to look at the actual vehicles, and I think that his is in really bad shape and caught fire, and I jokingly said, is that because it was budget day that it caught fire? But, so there are other things that are even happening with that vehicle, too.
Okay. For what I'm hearing is, and I think in terms of the award for constable works, you're going to probably be making more of the worst opportunity. But from your suggestion, you would rather keep yours than have it in the transit reserve?
Right now, I mean, there's nothing to do with that, I mean, my job, I mean, depends on having a family.
And we certainly then for one, constable to the court, and if it does right now, we need to be ready to move, to ensure that that, that vehicle is replaced.
I mean, we not.
With a new vehicle.
Yeah, the other suggestion, I, I could not sell the, the Tahoe in question, the formal draft from the sheriff's office, and if they had started every month or so to make sure it's still operational, if something did happen to yours, then that could be reserved right away until you made a decision. That, that's another option.
So as a backup, we can just hang on to that and sell it?
Yeah. That, that is another option for you to consider. It, it would be a little more to keep it on insurance, maybe a thousand for the year, but, but we could keep it just in reserve out if we just may have the keys, so.
And since it's obvious, we're probably going to have to keep one of our old vehicles. When, when I put all the vehicle prices together, I had, you know, we had to have, going from toptos, what we have now is what we have, we had to add some stuff that's going to be specific to that. One of that was the radio repeater. We don't have repeaters, so when we're out in the county, we don't talk to anybody, like the sheriff's office, if our handhelds, matter of fact, there's places in the city if we're on our handhelds, they won't get out without the repeater. So that would, a repeater, whoever's going to get the vehicle, a repeater's going to need to be added into the radio service, so we can put a repeater in our car. The other one, the new vehicle, that's all figured into that price. And I, you know, I don't remember how much, the ball got one, the other one was fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars for a repeater, and that's just basically so that our handhelds will work.
You can't, you can't communicate within the city.
I can, yes we can, but when, we're not always in, in the city. I mean, we get papers, I get papers, I've gone to Tanglewood, and, you know, serve papers. I've gone way deep north, she's gone outside the city. I don't know, I operate mostly in the city, but that repeater's, it's, it, the sheriff's office has them all, so as updates in contact. I mean, there, even with the repeater, there's places in the county, I believe that you can't even get reception area. But that's, that was all figured into the double cost of the car was a repeater.
So you're saying whoever doesn't get the car needs to have some type of.
Need to have a repeater.
Small budget for a repeater.
For the repeater, yes, we need to.
That's what the three thousand was for.
Yeah, we had three thousand allotted for equipment.
Even as close as, as the precinct two offices, I mean, it's just on the outskirts of, precinct three offices just on the outskirts of town, there is no portable region on reception area, you have to talk to the car, use your repeater and talk to the, there's spot, there's spotting places even close in town, and inside town. I mean, I was on the deal with real sour at a rent.
Sun Gate Apartments.
Yeah, in his, his precinct, and I had to use the cell phone to get backup.
And Kerry does have that included in there, it says allow three thousand for cop sync and radio trans.
Okay, so that is on my budget sheet, so that's pretty much explaining that house and everything, because his budget was added.
My, it's his.
As I said.
Mine is seven.
As I said, constable, I had to put that in a formula somewhere, and I just put it in there just to get our bottom line, the court had my made a decision, so I am the one that put that in there to make our bottom line formula work.
Okay, that question about the cop scene, I know in the previous years, the cop scene was up under IT, and we still.
This is actually moved it.
Oh.
From what I can, it's been a little.
Okay, so, Poughkeepsie.
So, Constable Jackson wants to keep the vehicle she has and ride it until it no longer runs, and use the backup from the, from the top of the sheriff's head, as, as that in case it does break down, correct? Is that correct?
She resigned to, to keep.
Again, we did not specifically take, tell you what your vehicle is, so you and Daryl need to decide who gets, who gets the new one.
Flipper calling. Flipper calling.
You know, I'm not gonna, I, I know we both need vehicles, and I totally understand Daryl's position as well, because I know, I've seen his vehicle, and I just really know we both need it, and I'm not gonna take away from him, I'm gonna keep my vehicle till, like I said, it just won't run. I'm gonna keep my vehicle till, like I said, if it just won't run.
And I think while you were out of room, Commissioner, we had decided that you needed a shortened constable. I'm kidding.
A short constable.
Somebody who fit in Maurice's car.
Oh, I thought you were saying because I was so sure.
It has to be someone five, six.
I don't know that I can put high requirements on the press release, Jackson.
Okay, uh, then also, Carrie, would you please explain the code for attorney amount here?
Yes, for some reason, we had the bill health, court appointed attorney in the bill health department and all of the other court appointed attorneys are represented in our general judicial. We had a million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget for that. I'm not sure why we had it separate, but I think if we just increase our general judicial court appointed budget by about twenty thousand, it can absorb the rest of the minimum of attorney, that way we'll have all of our court appointed attorneys in one. We can track it by four, but it's all budgeted together.
Let me start to, excuse me.
Last year.
Last year. Her total budget for court appointed attorneys, do you know?
I believe that too is up to even two million.
It's getting about real bad.
And then Carrie, this is all with a four percent, four point two five tax increase. Correct. And so my question is, as it relates to the COLA, there's a two percent in there. And so I would be interested to know the bottom line with even a one percent COLA and or no COLA. And, and the only reason I bring that up for discussion is, me personally, I shy away from raising taxes just to raise the employee salaries. In my opinion, we should be able to vet that out in the budget where we have dollars left to offset employee raises. So I would just be interested to know the end dollar with a one percent and a zero percent on the COLA.
Well, as it is proposed, you have ninety-seven thousand dollars. Too good, if you go to a one percent, you're going to be able to add two hundred and ninety-one thousand to that, so that'd be what, three hundred and eighty, about three hundred and eighty-two thousand?
So what would a, what would a tax increase need to be to, to support that?
Since we're at, we're in a quiet spot here. So I'm gonna give my philosophy on, on what we do with our employees. And I, and it's always concerned me because sixty-six percent plus of our budget is for salaries. Yet that's the last thing we look at. We are a service organization. Provide things for our people, our citizens, and it's people desire us, our employees to do that. And I hate to have them pay the price for us not being able to make some tough decisions on other, other parts of the budget.
I agree with that, I would throw a caveat and say such as, uh, uh, because we just uh, presented one of the, the item issues that is for our employee, meaning to ensure that they have the capacity to be built to do their job and not.
You could say that, I heard, I heard.
Oh, absolutely, and I did, that's why I asked the question of such as. Uh, and I am not arguing the point about the salaries because I was, I was, I've always been a part of ensuring that we take care of our employees in that manner. But I want to make sure we get the whole picture as well.
And just for the record, just so you all know, I've been out, I've been out there in the audience. I know what it's like when you hear what the community court are doing, what it's doing and what their, what the proposed budget's going to be. And then to say, well, the employees get this much, I know what it's like. I started out with a five percent increase for everybody. Um, as you can see, it dwindled down quickly with all the equipment we had to buy. So I know what it's like, I know how important it is to the employees, we would be nowhere without them. So we've got to do something, we have to do some sort of increase for the employees, we just have to, just to keep up. And the, the, your predecessor, Carrie, the last meeting he attended, he told Commissioner's Court that day, you have to raise taxes a little bit every year to keep up, just a little bit every year. And we haven't done that consistently in the last five, six years. So we're behind, it just happens to be my first year at office, so we're going to have to raise taxes considerably.
And we have.
Yeah, go ahead.
As soon as we do it, we can do a timeout, take three.
If I can, can I get these numbers real quick before we, we take the timeout?
Commissioner, it looks like we would be between a three and a three and four percent to break the big if we pull out about one percent. And we would be at about two point seven five, well, to our salary.
So roughly one percentage point based on one percentage of the COLA. So we would roughly be at a two point seven five percent increase without the two percent across the board on the salary. With it, we're looking at a four point two five tax increase. All right, thank you for this. Okay.
Sheriff, ten minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Recession's for ten minutes.
And it's, it's not what I came for, but I was like.
Feels like this budget has drawn out so long, I think it's just the time in between where I'm like, oh, we're still talking about it.
No, it's been worse.
It's either we got our chickens wet.
So, you know, if we get the building up, you know.
I was staying away so that more three of us.
Oh, no, we were bigger.
Okay, good. But I make sure, well, a little bit, it's very. He's telling me his family's sharing. I had to, like, I had to spell the word, exciting. And it's like, you could just like, sure, then you could hear it. It's a good, it's a good conversation, they're saying, well, when you find, yeah, like, you can have that money, he's like, I'll work here. Yeah, I, uh, yes, I think, like, this is, type of, that's a business, and I see it through, like, this is, that is, it's a, like. Should we, you want to just do a micro conference, or are you going to skip to a time of, like, potentially, just to get out? Sitting in a, with a, because you mean? We can even, we can, yeah, do a technical.
Is it over here, or is that?
How long are we getting this? Do you know, trying to, as, I think, because you get into all the units that do a question for you. I'm coming in, like, so, I'm trying to, just to make sure they're good. Okay, sixteen minutes, everybody come back. Because we need to have our game plan down before we go to the public meeting.
Can you wait for a county attorney? Karen, I guess you can go ahead and do the changes that we just discussed.
This was the largest change. Okay.
So, what, explain that one.
This, and, uh, he feels like it can be done without adding the two hundred thousand dollars in contingency for the bishop states. If he just transfers the work that people had scheduled for next year to bishop states and doesn't increase the amount of work, he can take that out, which is great, but it's already approved. So that goes into two hundred thousand dollars, which is the treatment.
Okay. You know, you don't think about it.
That's, that's the work. Is it going to reduce the number of miles we can?
No, we do about twenty to twenty-five regularly. And this year, we're going to cut back to about twenty to twenty-three anyway, and we'll just include that in instead of adding it on. So I think we can still do it under our budget.
For a little bit.
Yes.
And I think as we get closer, and this may be a comment for after the public meeting, once we get the formula and whatever that looks like, we need to be good about documenting the work, whether that's hours or supplies or et cetera. Because the number that we end up with, that's what we're going to send the bill to the residents. So I'm sure we'll get there, but that's, that's my only kind of point of process. When we get ready for the public meeting, that we're all in the know about the formula and then how we'll track that work. So that they know, the residents know, how we're tracking that work.
Speaking of which, this is the formula that they came up with based on that one eighty-eight. So it will change based on how we say that money will. It will be.
Do you have an extra for June for the reference?
The column with the star over the top of it is the one that they have agreed on. And the figure on the right is the percentage, of course, of the total project each, each landowner will pay. And then the little highlighted one line, for example, under, for Brian, it would be fourteen thousand, one forty-three. That, that's their share.
And so Commissioner, can you walk us through how they're getting their share?
They decided they'd take a look at the total previous property value, the distance used per foot. In other words, the, the, the distance, the road borders their property. And also, uh, property value, the distance driving it equal by owner. So they started out with dividing it up equally by each property owner. And then they started backing it up based on the value of their property and the distance that the road borders their property. And the one they came up with that they all liked the best was the one on the end. Fifty percent property value, twenty-five percent on the distance used, and twenty percent unequal.
Wow, you've got some houses out there that are really pricey. And then some that are.
Well, some are just, just locked.
Okay. So half a million is the biggest, greatest value. And they pay a lot of taxes. So far.
So anyway, you asked to have that shared.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Karen and Dave, I'll, I'll let you, you can have this one, and I can just get a talk to him.
Okay, there you go.
I really appreciate it.
I get a copy of Karen.
Okay. So, um, I understand y'all met, Commissioner, on the fire project proposal. Did you come up with any thoughts on that, or anything else you could do? I understand, oh, the big fire station project?
Yeah. We have, and, and that is, that's, we'll speak.
Can we talk about that now? Or is there a budget, you know, discuss this, or anything? I'm sorry, Karen, jumped around.
We met on the fire station last Thursday and went over various options on it. The, we put in a couple of alternatives. The last OPC is, is higher than the amount that y'all passed for budget last week. We put in alternatives that we think will drop it well below that. We'll get it down below that budget number. But again, we don't know what the actual cost is going to be until we put it out for bid and see what the contractors say. But our point, our decision out of the committee is that with that budget number, we will be below that budget number. We won't ask for any more than that.
And that includes everything, all the infrastructure for IT and towers?
Yes. We've, we've still at the original, we're still basing, we're still making what we put in for the original description of the building when we started it two years ago. And our plan is to come at the next, on the twenty-fourth, and present the final OPC and request permission then to go out for bids. So then we can start finding out what the actual cost is going to be when the contractors talk to us.
So Pat, you're saying the OPC, you expect it to be less, but you want to leave the budget number in as is and don't expect to exceed that?
The OP, the hundred percent OPC with our brochure list is higher than the budget number
Okay.
that y'all gave us. We put in an alternative, we put in a couple of alternates, leaving some things out if we need to, and changing some of the pavement types, those kind of things. And that way, when the contractors bid it, they can bid to go with option A, or they can go with option two and option three. And when we look at it, then we'll be able to change what we're doing to make sure that we make that budget number. And some of the things we gave up are things that, that if they're not put in original, we'll probably put in later. Some of them are going to be, like, changing the type of payment, will need more maintenance over the years. So we're going to pay for it in future years, we'll pay for it here. But I believe after, after we met as the committee, we should be able, if their OPC is, is close, we'll be able to make that budget number.
Okay. Is there any other, any other changes that we asked you to look at just in bright, very?
Just, can I just ask a quick question to Commissioner Vaughn on the project? None of the main infrastructure has changed. I mean, it's still two-story elevator, none of that has changed. Okay.
Yes, I think Mike deals with points, come speak to that item, but, but this showed me this morning, that's very definitive as far as COVID, uh, showing that we have to, buy about what it means out there.
The taxes accessibility standards, it's a mandate. It was changed in twenty twelve. And the wording on it was another significant impact from the twenty twelve task is that the two-story fire station now requiring elevator, even if only used by fire personnel. A second floor will typically also require two exit stairs. The stairs in this building is wide enough to accommodate that requirement there. One of the issues brought up was the cost. You're looking at right now a hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents a square foot. You talk about going into a structure, whenever you start saying we want to reduce it to one more bay, or you are reducing by one bay, you're not going to get a hun, a hundred and eighty-six dollar value out of that. You're probably not going to get anywhere from probably sixty to seventy dollar value. So it's not worth the money to go in and change the structure at this point just because you think a bay is adding a lot of money to it. One fire base not adding a lot of money to the structure. We did look at the, the, uh, one level. Uh, like Patton had mentioned at the last meeting, it was around a billion dollars higher to proceed with that, just keeping it at one story.
Pat, why is?
The cost of the concrete and everything, just spreading the footprint of the building out. Elevator, we're projecting around seventy-five, eighty-six thousand a minute. So it's, it's even cheaper to go with the elevator.
But that's assuming that you keep the same footprint. So you're saying going up, roughly two million dollars, two stories elevator going up. And then, and you're saying if we take that out and extend the footprint?
Your cost is going to go up on your structure.
Because just more material in your property.
You add your, uh,
The house. Or, it's that way, the house is cheaper to go up.
But you can also, through that process, that off the square footage, which brings the footprint back down to X. I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
If you've got a two-story structure here in order to receive the vehicles, anything above that, that current administrative is just dead space.
Say that, say that part one more time, Mike.
If you take everything to ground level, one story, you've already got a structure tall enough for your apparatus space. So everything above the administrative area would just be dead space if you spread your building out.
I think what she's, I think what she's proposing is that you build the five to four, five bays where you need them, then come down, just come down and then build the, just one story.
When the?
Not, no, not.
Not conditioned to the outside.
Yeah, you, actually, you build it from, from the ground up to what you need, just on the way to it. That's what I.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is, and I'm, and again, I'm just thinking, trying to think through.
When the architect came to us and said, you're going to have to put in an elevator, it was, oh, gosh, no, we're not putting in a elevator from us. Much more clearly, but, and so we told them to do, at that point, it was, it was in the design process, and they did an OPC where they took the second floor and put it on the first floor, and put it all on one level. And it came out to be significantly more money to do that than it was to, uh, keep it as a two-story and put it in the elevator.
And did they keep the height equal through the whole footprint?
The height of the buildings.
So then that, to your point, then there's this empty space.
And they do that with most buildings anyway, because you're talking about cost per square foot. When I looked at building fire station number four, we wanted to do the same thing. Uh, we were looking at, I can't remember the dimensions on the building now, but we were looking at, in the sixty-foot range in length. And when I went to him and talked to him about the building, they said it's cheaper to go in increments of twenty-five because your materials costs actually come down with that. And we wanted to add an additional office building onto the back of that station. And they told us, if you want to do that, just build your station bigger because it comes down to materials cost. You're spending the same amount per square foot, whether it's high up off or lower down. And if you look at our central fire stations that way, when they built that building, it is built at a centralized building, and we have half of that building probably that there is absolutely no use for the whole top part of it. And I've said that millions of times, that if we had the ability to go in there and we had the money to go in there, I would have that rebuilt deck, and we would have used it for upstairs storage or office space. So there's a lot of dead space. When you're talking about building a metal building, if we went in and built the wood and brick, we could build it any height, any dimension we wanted to. But when you're building a metal building, it comes down to your cost per foot, like your materials.
In the, the, for our, the normal, a normal building that you would build for an office is probably, is going to be eight feet tall. Because that's what most buildings, that's what most room heights are, and they don't need much of it. We're putting indoors in fourteen feet tall to be able to clear, not to clear the trucks we have today, but to clear possibility of, of future trucks. So we're already raising the edge of the building up to over sixteen feet. And that's why we're looking at the, that's why we looked at it in the second floor. The space is already there above the, above the, the first floor administrative area, the room between there and the roof. And that's why we originally set, built in that place. And that's why we originally said build in that place. And they ended up raising the edges of the, the, the building's a little bit taller to get the full second floor in. But the cost, when we went over with the architects, you know, it's, it's in the fifty, sixty thousand dollar range that we're talking. To pull it back down and we lose a lot of space on the second floor.
Mike, can we roll that elevator fall into the maintenance schedule?
We will, we will look at, put it within the budget for them to, to fall under our service agreement. One thing that I was looking at on these fire stations, by the time that this building is built and as well when we get to be sure of adding building in the core, those four foot bid, is next year I'll be coming to the commissioners, requesting additional personnel for department, once again, to take over these new buildings to put them back under our maintenance type program. So by the time budget be in action, we will maintain.
That's far in line with county life. So again, Commissioner, the height is was driving this as far as the apparatus and space began changing out.
We have elected every avenue to reduce costs from this point.
There are none of us that are happy with costs.
But we expect our taxpayers to be?
I'm a taxpayer too.
I know.
I'm not happy.
So if you're not happy, how can these commissioners explain to them to make them happy?
It's important, number one, it's, it's because of me. We've been asked to build for the future. We can build for what we need today. And by the time we got the building finished, we're way behind again.
We wouldn't be doing around being like, who built this and even if it didn't matter, if we didn't build for today, we have to look at a little perspective moving forward. I think that's where a lot of times, not to critique, but a lot of times ask, didn't look that far in advance of what we need to do.
And the other thing I see, and it's, it is nobody's fault to hear. This community court has supported the fire department excellent. There is no doubt about that and we appreciate it, all our members appreciate it. And I think a lot of the citizens that understand the fact they live in the county and they depend on our fire department, understand and appreciate. But for however many years before, the fire department was not taken care of. It was, y'all make do, y'all do this, y'all do that. And that's a bad habit of ours is we make do. And it's got Band-Aids on it and sometimes we didn't even get Band-Aids. It was kind of spit on it and tried to make it quit bleeding. And we did that. And unfortunately now, we're gonna have to catch up.
So Judge Choukat, I know that we've talked again about the county assistance program. Who will, I'm assuming that there's a somewhat of a general consensus that we take that back to the ballot and use a different strategy of how to do that? Who is leading that for the county? I don't know if that's.
You're wrong.
One time, Commissioner.
At least hoping that I lost, so.
Yeah, I know. Well, obviously it's not because of you.
Less learned of you.
It's not real, the one you didn't do, visiting, there's some people, they didn't, they was wording wrong.
Well, I think that was a big part of, and we tried, we tried to reach out to educate people. But, you know, I, I think this time we need to, you know, have to confront people and educate them on it because that was our problem.
What's so unfortunate that the people that you're serving are the ones that turned it down?
Yes, they didn't even understand what they're doing.
No idea.
I talked to one person I know that lives in Bushland and I said something to him about it. And he said, oh yeah, I voted today. I said, you vote for the county assistance district? And he said, well, no, I didn't do that. The county doesn't need any more assistance. And I explained it to him and he's like, can I go change my vote? And I'm like, no, but you try to talk to your neighbors and make sure they don't.
That's exactly what happened. They, they, it was worded badly on the ballot, so.
So Judge Choukat, I just, from a strategic perspective, for making these kind of investments, I mean, there's a lot more work that needs to be done. Is someone needing that?
Well, we can start, we need to start on that.
Okay.
I think it starts with you, David.
And we're willing, we're willing to do a lot of work. And we're often to a point of, I know with myself, I'm not exactly sure what I can do my personal self and as the assistant fire chief to further that. And I guess it is a county project, so we can do anything that's, we need to do or requested to do further.
One thing I'm gonna do is get the, I get the full court behind it and, and midway. And I, I would probably be towards the Commissioner Church to lead us out of that effort. And very, well, well, marketing and focus.
I think it's, yeah, that's, that's gonna be the key is that we, it's more than just one person kind of taking the lead and trying to do this on their own. It's gonna take all of us. And I think the same way as, as far as the whole county, as far as departments and all of that. What lifts one boat's gonna lift us all and so we, we all need to be supportive of it when we. But I think, again, we have to, as a court, vote to say, yes, we want to go ahead with this. And then that's the key to get started. Probably need to look, if we wanna do that, we need to look at it late this fall or early, early in the next year when we get going. The sooner the better.
And our volunteers, when we had meetings, we had public meetings, several of them across the county, five or six, I believe. And our volunteers all were there and supported it. And the comments been back from them is, when we do this, and it was when we did this again, right after, right after the election, it's when we do this again, let us know what else we need to do.
Sad part about those meetings where they were not very well attended, I mean, a couple of them, I'm disappointed at the citizens not being there. And I think probably there's a, there's a way to make that happen. And, you know, we're under office, it's a door-to-door deal. And I think something like what you, what we're gonna propose here needs to be door-to-door, with the proper literature, explaining exactly what, what this is going to do for them, for us, for them.
I think it'd be important to get a copy of what the actual wording was going to be on the ballot and include that in our literature and say, when you see this on the literature, this is what it means.
I don't think they can change the wording. I believe they, they are set on how it's gonna be worded. So we just need to explain what to look for and what that means. Random county in Texas, they make a thousand dollars a day, a thousand dollars a day of this.